2024 Work Session and Business Meeting. I'm going to ask to stand and do the pledge. We're going to be led by our science students.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was the best pledge leading that we've had so far. On videotape, they're not as effective as they are live and in person. I know the floor is a little cold. You'll only have to sit there for a minute. So we're going to start. It's so nice to have people in the audience.
It is.
It's so nice. We're going to start with Pride in Putnam Valley.
Yes. So, welcome all. I was going to echo those thoughts. It's nice to see friendly faces in the stands. And usually, sometimes we have one or two people. Sometimes it's just Dan waving back. But it's nice to have a full house and rightfully so as we're here to recognize some very special students and staff members as well. So our first presentation this evening is our Pride in Putnam Valley Award. And it's going to be awarded to Ms. Sierra Gabriel. And I would like to invite up David Kanchewitz to speak for us.
Hello, thank you. So when I came in to Putnam Valley Schools three years ago, Sierra approached me with an offer. And she said, "I'd really like to run the social media. I want to interview our athletes. I think we can make something great." And being here for the short time that I was, I said, "Great, great idea. Let's get after it." Little did I know, after that conversation, how big of a program this would turn into. And I really can't give Sierra enough credit. You took a small idea and turned it into a really transformational experience for our teams. We have 41 athletic programs at the moment. And Sierra makes it a point to cover all of them, whether it's a big event, a senior night, a small event, a casual, non-league game on a Tuesday. She is at everything, making sure that our teams are recognized, our student athletes get the recognition and appreciation that they deserve. And it has really brought our athletic program to the forefront of the public. We have a social media account for everybody. You'll find every score, every point, every milestone that all of our student athletes have made. And it's been such an honor and a privilege to watch you grow and watch you take ownership of this program that you created and to see you reap the rewards of it. I don't know anyone else who can come up to me and say, "Hey, I have to text Bruce and be talking about Bruce Beck from NBC." It's been absolutely amazing. You've been such a help for myself, for Ms. S., for the athletic program. And I just wanted to say how proud I am of you and how happy I am to see how everything's worked out. Thank you.
Hold on, Cece, you're going to get roasted some more before. So now I'd like to invite up Ms. Shuts, who has a few words to say as well.
Hi, good evening. My name is Katherine Shuts, and I'm an English film and television teacher here at the high school. And alongside my colleague, Dan Mahoney, behind the camera over there, our audiovisual specialist for the district, I have the good fortune of helping organize many of the different programs that run out of Studio 116. And our continuing mission is to educate students in how to effectively use media technology to communicate complex ideas and how to responsibly tell our stories. So Sierra, aka Cece, has been a part of our Studio 116 family now for the last three years. And it has been a pleasure watching her grow. We are here tonight to honor Cece for all of her hard work and accomplishments. And we just found out last week that Sierra is going to be going to Ithaca College on a full scholarship. And a few months ago, she was applying for that scholarship, the Ithaca Park Scholar Program. And she asked me to write a letter of recommendation for her. And I, of course, immediately agreed. I said, "Yes." And I just wanted to share that letter with all of you this evening. So here we go. I'm getting all teary. Okay, sorry. "It is with great pleasure and enthusiasm that I write in support of Sierra Gabriel's application to the Ithaca Park Scholars Program. I took the liberty of reading all about the Park Scholars Program on your website, and Sierra truly embodies the ideal candidate for your program. She loves media and has created a tremendous amount of content for our TV class, IB Film Classes, and Video Production Club. The two documentaries Sierra made in particular have had a tremendous impact on the Putnam Valley community. Sierra's passion, tenacity, and dedication to Studio 116 over the past three years has been astounding to witness. Truly, I've never encountered a student like Sierra before, and I know I would be lucky if I were to come across another student with even half of her abilities in the future. To begin, I have known Sierra since her sophomore year, when she was a student in my AP Lang and Composition Class and my Media Production Classes at Putnam Valley High School. It was in media production that she first learned how to write, produce, film, and edit local news for the high school. Then during her junior and senior years, I also had the pleasure of having her in my IB Film HL cohort. Apart from class time, Sierra has also been an active member of our TV club and a huge contributor to our school's various live streaming sporting events. She even spearheaded PV Athletics, a social media platform that reports on all of Putnam Valley sporting events. In Media Production Class, Sierra was an integral part of our newsroom. Cece always knew exactly what was going on at the school, and she always knew how to interview in order to get the scoop. The combination of her tenacity and charisma meet perfectly in Sierra, and she is an outstanding reporter. She instinctively knows how to talk to people, when to listen, and when to ask follow-up questions. And she particularly loves covering sporting events, and over the past two years has covered some of the most important moments in PV sports. Last year, Sierra made a documentary on one of Putnam Valley's most successful female basketball players, Eva DeChet. Sierra dedicated weeks to interviewing Eva's family and friends and managed to put together a heartwarming documentary called "The Road to Roadie", following the basketball journey of Eva DeChet. The documentary premiered in our Hall of Fame induction ceremony, and many members of the PV community enjoyed watching her work. Her documentary is still our most popular video on the Studio 116 YouTube channel, which I recommend you all check out. And so when the opportunity to film an even more important documentary presented itself earlier this year, I knew that Sierra would be the right person for the job. This November, the Putnam Valley Football Team's manager, Eduardo Rosinos, became a finalist for the very prestigious New York Giants' Heart of a Giant contest. Studio 116 had a little less than two weeks to create a five-minute documentary on why Eduardo had the Heart of a Giant. I immediately called upstairs and pulled Cece out of her English class. Yeah, and I don't usually do that. I love English. And I put her in charge, and I told her what had to be done. She immediately sprang into action, and it was a joy watching her methodically list all the people that needed to be interviewed, all the questions that needed to be asked, and then direct a team of her peers. After all the footage was compiled, we spent days together putting the finishing touches on that film, painstakingly editing each moment down to exactly five minutes. We submitted the film, and then after Thanksgiving, Sierra sat with Eduardo for hours and helped him prepare for his final interview with the New York Giants. Happily, as we all know, Sierra's hard work paid off. Eduardo won, and Sierra got the opportunity to accompany Eduardo and the boys' varsity football team to Giants Stadium. Sierra had the honor of standing in the press box with the other reporters and even had the opportunity to meet Bruce Beck, who she now calls Bruce, and she got to speak to him. To say I was proud was an understatement. Sierra's hard work, dedication helped Eduardo to be honored and recognized. And her support of Eduardo and the PVHS community made a difference in a truly powerful way. To put it simply, Sierra embodies the spirit of an Ithaca Park Scholar. She works tirelessly to help people, to serve her community, and to make a difference in the world. Considering her dedication, charisma, and generosity of spirit, let me say that I am absolutely positive that she should be selected as a Park Scholar. I unreservedly give her my highest recommendation. And Cece, I just want to say that we are so proud of all that you have accomplished. And on behalf of Mr. Mahoney and myself, we wish you tremendous success in all your future endeavors.
There's only eight more, Cece, it's all right. All right, so I actually have a few notes from Mr. Mello, who is currently attending a scholarship dinner with some of our students. But I did want to say a few things myself. And I was going to talk a little bit about having the honor, privilege of attending the Heart of a Giant ceremony down at Giants Stadium. And while Eduardo certainly received his recognition, I remember being in awe of Cece throughout that event, her confidence and her professionalism, where she found herself immersed within national media attention and carrying on conversations with the same individuals you see on TV each night. And the rave reviews we heard from those individuals, like, "She's a high school student? I could hire her tomorrow." We were talking about, all of a sudden, she's running a camp in Iona. So I remember being like, "Oh, my God. Like, this is her calling, and this is really what she's meant to be." So again, congratulations. And while this has been a long time in the making, I'm happy that we were able to have this opportunity tonight to finally recognize you. As for Mr. Mello's comments, he's mad at all of you for stealing his content. But I'm just going to read what he wrote, because most of you already said it. "Congratulations, Cece. We couldn't be more proud of you and all that you have done to help others and to promote our school. You truly have made the most of your high school experience. You've taken advantage of every opportunity, and this has benefited you and our school community. Cece is a prime example of how a motivated student can channel their energy into helping their community, and the awards are plentiful. You are on a first-name basis with Bruce Beck, the lead sports broadcaster for NBC New York. Mr. Beck was so impressed that he offered you a scholarship with this renowned broadcasting camp this summer. Sierra learned yesterday that she had been accepted into a prestigious Park Scholar Program at Roy H. School of Communications at Ithaca College. The scholarship covers full tuition, room, and board at Ithaca College for a select few outstanding students. The scholarship covers all four years. Park Scholars learn to use media to inform and inspire, guided by the program's three overarching principles: excellence in academics, commitment to service, passion for responsibility, ethical and responsible, ethical communications." This is a $72,000 a year scholarship. $72,000 a year for... For the parents of our elementary school students sitting on the floor, I apologize for that number. "Sierra, we are amazed with everything you have been able to accomplish at Putnam Valley High School, and we look forward to hearing about your journey as a communications major at Ithaca College." Matt Mello, Principal, Putnam Valley High School. Congratulations. So I know that we have a quick highlight video of some of the media that you have produced. So we're going to show that first. And then I guess finally, you'll actually get your award after all that.
My name is Cece, and welcome back to the night show. We have lots to talk about today, so let's get started.
Hello, and welcome back to our new making segment, To Make or Not To Make. I'm Reese.
And I'm Cece, and this is a show where we make treats in review, whether you should make or not with the help of our PVHS students. Today, we're going to make some cookies, which is a combination between brownies and cookies. This should be good. So let's get started. Now, we're going to add in our flour and our toppings. You can use whatever you like, but we're just going to add chocolate chips.
All right, we finished our cookies, and we had such a fun time making them.
And to be honest, they were pretty scrumptious. But let's get some reviews from some of our high school students.
We'd love to.
Can you like eat it now?
Yeah, you have to tell us what you think.
Okay.
It's very chocolatey. Is that like peppermint, like peppermint chocolate? That's really good.
Congratulations, seniors, on your sweeping win in Cola Awards. And we hope my class can be as good as yours one day.
It looks like our sophomore class. Oh, I'm sorry, our junior class. Absolutely dominated your... A very, very tough one. Easy for them, and our freshman class did some trouble. Now, we're sophomore class, and our freshman class, now we've only got to tell you, we're moving to our end of the board. That was an easy win, I think. Very, very, very easy win. Now, we've got to have all the strategy there. I know, I think we've got to get our super class in just a couple of moments. After we go, we have the sophomore and freshman.
What's up, Cola Awards? This is Cece and Reese, and this is Shirley Temples with Cece and Reese. So today, we're going to be making Shirley Temples, and we have our ingredients here. We have grenadine, sprite.
There it is.
Cups, and our straws.
So let's get started. So we're here with Mrs. Cassell.
Are you marking this?
You should. You should.
These are delicious.
On a scale of one to 10? Cola Awards people, we've heard it from the popular Mrs. Cassell. 11 out of 10. You didn't think that, or you don't?
I'm just Cece, and I'm making...
I'm so excited. You show me how to make a Shirley Temple first?
Ice, ice cream.
Ice, ice cream, okay. What's this stuff, the grenadine?
Grinade, yeah. I always thought it was like cherry syrup, but it says it has a pomegranate on it.
Yeah, there's pomegranate on there. Wow. All right.
You're going to put the...
Oh, you're putting any in first.
The grenadine, okay. Whoa, 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 not too much. What's up? This is Sierra Gabriel. We have Sierra and Angel and Jack, and they have just been held in like five minutes. Forty-eight, forty-five, a lot of good shots from you guys. What did you guys want to throw away specifically for this game that they're holding?
All right, this is Sierra Gabriel. We have, and I carry it with Tony Tigan. It is this large, strict, simple, at- head, with a Putnam Valley girls' basketball. How did you arrive at this big honor, please?
It's been an amazing experience. I mean, these girls have been amazing all year.
When I was younger, it was more of like a thing I wanted to do for fun.
I started to see that she was starting to become a little bit different than everybody else. I mean, everybody looks at her, wow, she scores 30 points a game, but she also gets four or five steals a game, four or five blocks a game.
She will. Be a vet at 10 o'clock, and she knows she has to work out the next morning.
You know, Eva's like showtime.
My biggest inspiration to start playing was my dad.
I used to coach my old daughter Amanda's AAU team. And I used to bring Eva, a carrier, to the practice. And I'd sit her on the sideline while I was coaching Amanda's team.
So she would sleep to the sound of buzzers and basketball bouncing and coaching. It would soothe her. She would sleep.
He always wanted to push himself to every ability that was out there and achievable for him. And he, as the years went on, accomplished all of those goals and surpassed even what I think many of us thought that he would be able to do in high school.
Eduardo is the universal hype man for the football team. He is so happy to be out there. The other players on the team love seeing him. He gets out there with Coach, he gets into the huddle. He is making sure they have the information they need to run their plays.
I think his commitment to be on the field with us, to helping us, to making us better, whether it's giving us water in the game, cracking jokes with us at practice, and just uplifting our moves every day.
He keeps track of everything. He's always, he's right there. If you need something, go to Eduardo, and he's got you with anything.
You can see the Heart of a Giant sign in the background. That is literally all for Eduardo. We're so excited to be here. They represent the team behind me. They're really, really excited and looking forward to a TV desk.
All right, you ready now? "The Putnam Valley Central School District proudly presents the Pride in Putnam Valley to Sierra Gabriel. The school, the entire school community recognizes your efforts, hard work, in promoting the high school athletic teams and memorializing meaningful moments for so many of our student athletes. You lead by example as a student, and you are an inspiration to others to follow their passions. April 11, 2024, Dr. Jeremy Love, Superintendent of Schools, and the Board of Education. Congratulations."
So, okay, I'll try not to be emotional, because I've cried like three times. Oh, but, um, okay. Okay, so I'm very honored to receive this award because, you know, there have been a lot of things that I was able to do. Like, ever since I've grown up, I've always been the type of kid that said, you know, like, "I want to do this, I want to do this, I want to do this." And I got a lot, sometimes I got no's, sometimes I got yeses. But somebody who has been there throughout all, first and foremost, has been the Lord Jesus Christ. And I'd like to thank Him for everything that He's provided. There have been a lot of closed doors and open doors. Remember, there have been open doors and opportunities that I've had in the past few years, in the past few months. People tell me, "Cece, wow, you're really lucky." Or, "Cece, like, the stars aligned." And I'm like, "No, the Lord Jesus Christ did it. And He timed it so perfectly for me to meet amazing people and to have amazing opportunities and to see, like, everyone here, so many special people here that have been so... They've been really important to my journey." I'm sorry, I'm like crying, and it probably looks really crazy, but it's okay. But yeah, they've been, they've been here the entire time and guiding me and supporting me. And it just reinforces the fact that this award that I have here, it's not something that I could have done by myself. It's something that I did with the support of my PV community and people outside of that. So thank you, PV community, for doing everything you do. The Board, thank you so much for this honor and for consistently supporting me. Thank you to the district, the Athletics Department, the Media Department, faculty and staff who have supported me this entire time and going the extra mile for a student like me, you know, with people like me, like, who decided to like talk for like a million hours and stress about my problems. And then they're just there to fold their hands and listen and be like, "It's okay," you know? And just being there to support me and provide resources for me that I may not necessarily be able to access myself and to offer wisdom as well and tell me like, "Cece, like, it's time to take a break." Or, "Cece, like, I think you should step back." Or, "Cece, you should give this to somebody else. I don't want you to like, just, I don't want you to burn out. I want you to take the time." And those are the people that have been there to support me the entire time. And I want to thank my parents as well, who have... They've instilled the valuable principle of putting in the work so I could see the results of it and get as much out of it as possible. And they demonstrate that to me every single day. They have such a hard and strong work ethic, and they decide to sacrifice for me in a variety of ways. And it means so much to see that. And like, even like purchasing tickets to a game and the time that I couldn't drive, driving me to all these different games, like golf, you have track and field, you have like lacrosse, basketball, girls' basketball, going to like, like wherever, going to like, I don't even know, but like, just going there so I can be there to cover the event. And that's what they do for me. And as a couple of people have mentioned, I'm excited to share that I'll be going to Ithaca College to continue my education in broadcast journalism. And as I mentioned, I'll be a Park Scholar. And I'm very excited for that, because it mirrors the community that I'll have, that I have here in PV, especially with my IB diploma candidates. I told them in my interviews, as people were mentioning, I had interviews, and I said, "Looking at other schools, they don't have the same program as Ithaca, where you have a community and a family that values community service and time and being a leader and being, having collaborative skills. And those are things that are so important." So I'll wrap this up. But I just want to thank everyone so much for your support, and my friends as well, who have been there side by side to pull up with all my crazy moments and my sad moments and my excited moments and all my moments. Yeah, so thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else here tonight we should recognize? Oh, sorry. You guys sat patiently. I guess it's your turn. All right, so we have some very special students here, both in the elementary school students, as well as some high school students that we would like to recognize this evening. And I would like to begin by inviting up Ms. Bross and Ms. Bruno, who will help facilitate this, wherever they're hiding. Oh, they're behind me. Did you not know I was calling you up? Was that a surprise? Surprising. I do want to first recognize these two individuals. They put in a tremendous amount of work to make what you saw the other evening at the elementary school and tonight possible. Without them and their tireless efforts, none of this would be possible. And these fantastic students would not have the opportunity to display their skills. So I do want to thank them both for their time and the effort in making this all possible, as should our students for you giving them the opportunity to showcase their skills. And I'll turn it over to you to call them up. Thanks.
Actually, before you call the students, I'd like to say, Sierra was in fourth grade once. She did not see what was coming. But her hard work and continued question... But her hard work and continued questions, looking at things, looking at things in a new way, trying out new ideas, all the things that I saw in your projects tonight are things that she exhibited when she was in fourth grade and that many students exhibit. So, you know, it's a powerful thing to see somebody kind of at the end of their Putnam Valley journey and you're kind of just not really at the beginning, but somewhere near the middle. And what I saw from your presentations tonight was so incredibly important. You were so clear in your ideas and your thinking, you were so sure of what you did and how you did it. You were so professional in your presentations. I just am amazed, truly amazed. All right, it's been a pleasure for both of us to work with you. We think you're fantastic, as were all of the projects. But you put in an extra effort and it shined. You were chosen for a variety of reasons and we're proud of you. You should be proud of yourself and we hope truly that this is just the beginning of your journey in science or whatever you choose because the world is yours. So go out and get it. Jonathan Amendola, come on up. Ryan Byrd. Jonathan, stay here. Olivia Grasso. Could they say what their project was, just so that the community that's watching will know the kind of variety of questions that they were asking? Or can they? You want them to say what their project was? Okay, all right. Dylan Hague. Connor Keeler. Anthony Lombardo. Cole Martin. Arabella Masha. Sophia Matola. Andrew Polatsky. Jordan Reynolds. Jay Crower. Isabella Urbina. Owen Wood.
All right, so now you guys are going to have an opportunity to tell everyone what your, what your project was on, okay? So you can say your name and your project.
Andrew Polatsky, do dragons exist?
Sophia Matola, what is the best way to keep our berries fresh longer?
Anthony Lombardo, what do sunflowers grow best?
Olivia Grasso, do dragons exist?
Ryan Byrd, do objects float better in saltwater and freshwater?
Are you guys going to go to the other end? Everyone else slide down? Everybody get to see you.
Jonathan Amendola, build a gaming controller out of Mickey-Micky.
Dylan Hague, helping students who can't speak.
Connor Keeler, what laundry detergent cleans baseball pants the best?
It happens to not be the most expensive one. I learned.
Cole Martin, what do sunflowers grow best in?
Arabella Masha, what colors are dogs most attracted to?
Blue.
Isabella Urbina, and it's about bridges.
Jordan Reynolds, and it's about bridges.
Ben, are you ready? You go already?
Jake Crower, what slows the Hot Wheels car down the fastest?
Owen Wood, underfam will fly past.
All right, now you guys got to squeeze in for a picture. So you guys come over here. Parents, feel free to stand up and snap a picture as well. Good shot, good shot.
How about Dr. Podesta? How about Dr. Podesta, get in the picture? Come on, Dr. Podesta, we need you in the picture. Dr. Podesta.
So nobody can leave before the budget presentation. So we'll give you an opportunity to leave before the budget. Oh, sorry, we got to, we got to, sorry, recognize our high school mentors.
Oh, right.
All right, so I'm really not great at pronouncing names, so I'm going to do the best I can. And my high school friends and volunteers, we could never do this without you. We appreciate your time and effort so much for helping our fourth grade scientists rock at what they did. And we honestly could not have done it without your help, so we really do appreciate it. Really hope you come back and help us next year for those of you who are still under classmen. We promised to appreciate you just as much then, but we just wanted to say thank you and honestly, you know, you really do make a difference and we hope that these amazing students right here grow to be just like you guys and we're super proud and super happy to have you. So we would like to thank those friends for coming up. I guess we'll call all the names and whoever's here can come on up and receive their recognition. Oh, I'm reading from here, sorry. Okay, Yalika Almonte. Asaei Bayounis. Ianar Bustos. River DeMarco. Andrew Gardner. Sophia Garibaldi. Jack DeHouli. Soleh Hogg. Isabella Qui. Adeline Lysengang. Amelia Melphy. Kate Nielsen. Juliette Regner. Jada Reynolds. Margaret Sampson. McKinley Scherf. Manisha Singh. Alina Toon. Julia Toth. Oh, I'm sorry, am I going too fast? Sorry. Dr. Podesta always yells at me for that. I talk too fast, sorry. Brandon Urbina. Rachel Urbina. And Isabella Walther. And that is it, so thank you all.
All right, now would be your time to escape before the budget presentation starts. Thank you all, have a wonderful evening.
And don't forget to vote for the budget.
May 21st.
May 21st.
May 21st, come out and vote. We'll sing together.
Well, we've lost our audience. And Joe, so we have two.
And it got really quiet in here.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment on the listed agenda items.
Good evening, Joe Ferraro. It's tough for you guys to follow all of that fun stuff. And this is even less fun. I have two comments that may have an answer or not. Tonight on the agenda, you're approving the 5,000 series for students, yet the 5,300 series is being omitted from that. And it says specific things need to be addressed. I wonder if those are things that could be shared or not. And secondly, on the consent agenda, there is a change of the newspaper of record from PCNR to the Putnam Press Times. And I just wonder, the wisdom in that change, it might be an expense thing, but it seems that there's almost no circulation whatsoever of the Times, other than like the three drop points. Actually, there's only two now, which is the library and town hall, and they're adding one known as, I spoke of them today. They couldn't even give me a subscription number for, for Putnam Valley, which is tiny. Even PCNR has small numbers, but I think it's at least three or four Times. Also, I had to go back to the three issues of the Putnam Times to find any articles of Putnam Valley. Everything is on the other side of the county, whereas PCNR, I know, over the years, has made a concerted effort to cover more of this part of the county. So those are things that I think need some sort of thinking, if not already thought about. Thank you.
Joe, for the PCNR, we are required, they were our official newspaper, we're required to post our legal notice four times for the vote. PCNR is no longer accepting legal ads as of May 1st, so we had to change the newspaper. We never got official notice they're going out of business, but no legal ads after May 1st. Putnam County Times is the only other paper in the county besides the Journal News that has any paid subscription, so we had to pick them by default.
Seeing as PCNR, you know, complained, complained about not getting legal notices from the county because they decided not to use them and they were complaining, so
I didn't want to say they're going out of business because we never notified, but no legal ads.
Yeah, Doug Cunningham and Eric Gross, I spoke to Eric recently, and Doug feels it's time for him to back away from the paper. He has a potential buyer, potential, but it will do us no good for the budget vote and by law we have to print, you know, our budget somewhere.
So, yeah, no, can you answer the other question?
Yeah, so the 5,300 series is actually specific to the district code of conduct and that requires a separate hearing. So that's a public hearing before those changes are made, so that's, even though it's part of the 5,000 series, it has to be broken up and we have to treat it differently. So that will be coming once the code of conduct has been updated, but that's the reason for its omission from the current 5,000 series. It's just separate rules governing code of conduct, we have to hold a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to say that the treasures report for January and February 2024 are available in the business office. So the third reading, the second reading of the 5,000 series policies, we're going to, we're not going to read them, right? Because there were no changes from last time. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Sam, you were on that committee?
No, I think it went well. Took us two days, but we did it.
Okay, so now we're going to move to the consent agenda. Item number one, please.
Resolve to approve the consent agenda, items two through 13, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
The consent agenda includes an updated substitute pay schedule, which is going to, it's just on the website now. I believe it was a change in the bus driver substitute rate only. Approving the minutes of the previous board meeting, approving additional hours for various staff members, approving unpaid time for various staff members, approving the 23, excuse me, 24, 25 initial contract of services with PNW Bosse's. Authorizing the superintendent of schools to enter salary letters of agreement for the upcoming school year with individual contract employees who are not represented by a bargaining unit. We're accepting a donation of $75 from the DeAnabel family. They annually send us money to be deposited into the John C. Kleiner Scholarship Fund. We're retiring the 5,000 series policies except for policies 5,300 through 5,300.75, which are the code of conduct policies. They'll be reviewed at a future date. Approving the second reading of series 5,000 policies as presented tonight at this meeting. We're amending a coaching appointment for JV Boys Lacrosse 2024 Seizing. We're amending the official newspaper of record. PCNR no longer will accept legal ads as of May 1st, so we will have the Journal News and the Putnam County Times, which is the only other newspaper in the county with a paid circulation. And we're approving CSE CPSE placements.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mrs. Bellino. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolutions pass. Reports? Here, you lost, you lost your partner in crime.
Yes. All right, so today we had the 21st Annual Poetry Jam, which took place in the library at the high school during lunch. The poetry jam is an open mic opportunity for high schoolers to share poems, sing songs, play an instrument, or do some sort of stand-up comedy. We had a great turnout with lots of support and it's sponsored by The Literary Magazine, which just released a new edition and The Literary Magazine is run by Mrs. Getman and Mrs. Foster. IB exams are coming up in May for the seniors. Tickets for the Spring Musical Rent are on sale. You can buy tickets by going to the Putnam Valley Central School District website, or if you're a student at PVHS, you can buy tickets from Mrs. Suzie Cummings in the box office. Tickets are $5 for students in advance, 10 for students at the door. Senior citizens are invited to a complimentary dress rehearsal on Thursday, April 25th, starting at 3:30 PM. Rent takes place Friday, April 26th at 7:00 PM, Saturday, the 27th at 7:00 PM, and Sunday, the 28th at 2:00 PM. Spring sports are continuing to go pretty well. The end of the third quarter is next Friday, April 19th. The National Honor Society induction is Wednesday, May 1st at 7:00 PM. And for senior parents, there's a virtual senior parent meeting next Wednesday, April 17th at 7:00 PM, which will discuss senior week, prom, and graduation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Love, did she steal your thunder again?
A little bit, I didn't have that much. So, I know we had, last meeting I think was right after the dress rehearsal for the elementary school musical, Suzical Kids, but that performance took place after our meeting. So again, kudos to all the students involved and the staff, Maddie Cahoon and Chrissy Phillips, who make that all possible. As I mentioned last time, there's nothing cuter than elementary school kids in Cat in the Hat outfits. Our high school students continue their cast prop- Our high school students continued their cast propoio presentations. Our middle school held their National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony with the two National Honor Society co-presidents speaking. PTA held a budget Q and A session. And our high school unfortunately wasn't able to attend, but our high school held their poetry jam today during the lunch period. In unfortunate news, New York State has again postponed its budget adoption, so we still not, we still haven't adopted budget. Therefore, as has been the last couple weeks, the presentation that Jill and I will give shortly is still based upon budget estimates on state aid. We have our transportation bid opening tomorrow, so that'll be helpful in providing more accurate numbers in time for the board to adopt our proposed budget next Tuesday, or hopefully adopt it. I don't know if anybody noticed, but there was an eclipse on Monday. We did stay open. But actually, it was a really special event, I felt. I spent significant time over at the elementary school. Almost every, as far as I know, every elementary school classroom bought their students outside. The district had purchased classes for the students. They spent the day learning about the eclipse and what was happening at an age-appropriate level. Teachers and support staff were super cautious in going over the safety protocols and making sure that everyone understood how to safely view it through the classes. And it was really, a really special occasion, and even the teachers themselves were like, wow, that's actually pretty cool. So the kids were amazed, the teachers were amazed. Even as we were dismissing classes, students were stopping in the parking lot to turn around to get one last glimpse up at the eclipse. So it was a good day, all in all, and a huge thank you to all of the teachers and support staff, especially those at the elementary school, who made that all possible for us students. Putnam Valley has once again been recognized as the best community of music education. So this award's been given to Putnam Valley as a community and celebrates our commitment to music. We've received this award numerous times in the past, and of course continues to honor to have our district and community recognized. Putnam County's youth awards dinner is being held this evening. That's where Mr. Mello was. He is in attendance with David Delapi, one of the youth award recipients. Mr. Mello is attending that award. And then I wanted to have a quick discussion, calendar discussion with the board. And it's not that we necessarily have to answer this this evening, although time is of the matter. But I was approached by one of the unions regarding why the district does not have April 22nd, which is Passover, as a day off on their calendar. I had explained that our calendar is always based upon the Bosse's calendar. At the time of adoption, the Bosse's calendar also did not have that day off. I know that Bosse's in some districts have since changed around days to afford off for Passover. Others have not. We did a quick survey, and some districts are open and some are closed. But I did want to bring it, since it was brought to my attention, ultimately, the Board of Education has the responsibility for setting the school calendar, so I wanted to bring it to your attention to at least have a discussion, if not come up with an answer.
We have extra snow days at this point?
So we use three of our allowed six snow days.
Oh, wow. I mean, to me, that is not an unreasonable request then. I would certainly give them more fun on 22nd.
But it's less than two weeks. I think for parents, this is going to be a real concern.
What would we do normally with the three extra snow days? Because it's not gonna snow anymore.
But there's on the calendar, it says the give back days. But this was not one of those days.
We don't, just to clarify, we don't give back those snow days. Those would just be instructional days typically.
Okay, I got you.
So one of the things that I would say to that, first of all, from the religious standpoint, is if we can, we should. If we have the ability and the means to be able to allow people who celebrate that holiday to do so without the worry of not being at work that day, I think that we should do that. Secondly, as a parent, I think two weeks is fine notice. However, it depends on the way it's communicated, right? So, you know, I would just ask that we do blast communication, making sure that there's an actual physical flyer that goes home as opposed to just, you know,
An email.
An email. Oftentimes, you know, for the elementary world, backpacking works a little bit more efficiently. Email, text, multiple times, just to make sure that parents understand. You know, perhaps teachers can just reach out to parents as well from their level on the mind or dojo, whatever it is that they use to communicate with their families. That's often the best means of communication is through the teacher. But I think that with two weeks' notice, if we were able to make a decision soon, that that would be okay as long as we communicate well.
Do we know if children's center can be open that day?
They typically base their schedule around, so. I mean, I can't speak for them, but they typically would base their schedule around when we are there.
What made it untenable this year is that Passover and Easter were so far apart. Normally, they're fairly close together. And it is a very much celebrated Jewish holiday. And if we have the means to do it, I think we should.
Yeah, it's a very important holiday to the Jewish people. And I think that if we have children, staff members, families in the district that celebrate that holiday, even if it's one, we should honor it if we can. You know, some years, the calendar doesn't work in our favor, but. Yeah, I also think that perhaps providing options for parents if they don't have childcare that day. Maybe the town has something that they can put together through Parks and Rec or something, I don't know. Maybe we should just collaborate with partners to see if there's something that we can offer for parents as far as ideas as to where their children can go that day.
We don't have the full board here, so definitely a decision can't be made this evening.
Well, I think it has to be, I think tomorrow would be the last day that it would be reasonable to send out a notice to parents.
That's true. That's a good point, Barbara.
Jeanette said, you know, that she was, I spoke to Jeanette today, and she said her concern was, you know, parent care, you know, the change of plans quickly. But she didn't object on any other grounds. She just wanted to be sure that. And I like your ideas of reaching out in multiple ways so that parents are aware.
So we do, well, we do have the luxury of having another board meeting on Tuesday. So if we want to get feedback from the two board members who are not here regarding their personal beliefs, I can certainly communicate this as early as tomorrow as an anticipation, and then we could pass the resolution approving it on Tuesday. If that's, if we're worried about communicating it early, I could send a communication that says out in anticipation of the board.
It's gonna be discussed on Tuesday.
Approving this on Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Please prepare to have such.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
This way, we're not taking more time to communicate it.
Right.
We're not approving it before it's technically.
Just say that, it might be approved on Tuesday.
So along those lines, since we're having the calendar discussion, the discussion that we have each year, or just about each year, is adding half-days at the end of the school year when we have unused snow days. So based upon when school trips are planned at the middle school, I'm recommending that the board make June 26th, which is the half-day, the last day of school, a half-day for students. And at the elementary school, June 25th and June 26th, half-days for students. And that again, is we have some unused snow days, and they'll therefore meet the minimum number of hours and day requirements set by New York State.
I mean, they're still in session, half-day, they're there, so yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So we'll work on a communication, and then we'll plan on adding that to the agenda on Tuesday.
Good.
All right. And my last note, I know that Kira had already brought up, was about rent. Tickets are on sale, and the first showing is on Friday, April 26th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our budget presentation.
You got this one, Joe?
We need a slogan.
Do you want me to start or do you?
Ladies and gentlemen, take a look at our past two meetings for the budget update.
Thank you, Sam.
We have no update.
So our goal is to streamline this each time, get it just a little bit faster. All right, so good evening. This will now be the third edition of the 2024-25 Putnam Valley School Budget Presentation. I would like to begin by recognizing the efforts of Ms. Jill Figarella and her department, who did a lion's share of all of the behind-the-scenes work, as well as the creation of this presentation. As always, our budget is based upon what our core values are of our district. So just a quick reminder, community, opportunity, resiliency, and empowerment. These are the core values that were established by our school community only last year, and I think really embody all that we want to see from our school community. We recognize our fantastic building leaders, but also understand that this budget is really intended to serve the leaders of tomorrow, who are the students in our schools each day. A quick rundown of enrollment, we have just under 1,500 students. We anticipate a decrease in students at the elementary school. The cause of that is we are moving a very large class of 4th graders onto 5th grade, and right now have a very small number of kindergarteners registered. So if anybody knows any five-year-olds looking for a quality education, we encourage you, and if they live in our school boundaries, of course, to please send them our, make sure I got the disclaimer in here, they have to live in our school boundaries. But any five-year-olds within our Putnam Valley school boundaries who would like a quality education, please send them our way so we can get them registered. Our middle school will see a slight increase in students. They are also moving a very large class onto the high school, but welcoming a large class from the elementary school. And our high school will be slightly increasing with that large 8th grade class moving up to 9th grade. I do want to take this quick opportunity to recognize some of the staffing changes. So the numbers on these slides reflect an additional elementary school teacher, which will lower class size. Our current 3rd grade class will go from five sections to six.
Good.
Middle school staffing includes the addition of a guidance counselor. So a current ratio of almost 1 to 500, 1 to 450, is well beyond what the recommendation is. So now we'll have two counselors at our middle school serving those students. And the high school, while no new staff, we will be welcoming a new teacher after hiring a lovely teacher to fill our physics vacancy, which went unfilled. We were grateful that Amy Lee was willing to step up and take on that role this year. But we'll be welcoming a new teacher with us next school year for that position. So the administrative offices, we have 21.25 staff members, eight administrators, and 13 support staff. And while we've added individuals to our transportation department throughout this school year to take advantage of some efficiencies, we don't anticipate additional staff. And the caveat there is dependent upon what our transportation bid results are. If the transportation bid results come back very high, it could become advantageous for us to hire our own drivers. If they do not, then we'll continue to move forward with the contracted bus services. As always, our budget is grounded in the academics, in staff, and our other contractual responsibilities, and the facilities and transportation. These are really what drive our school budget, and the academic program alone represents 75% of the entire school budget. And I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Figarella, take you through some of the numbers.
Thank you. So I was, before we do this, I was thinking maybe Tuesday, since we have to come back and do this again, we won't do this again. I think if, at that time, maybe it's a good opportunity for all of us to have like a, maybe more questions and, you know, talk about the highlights of the budget as a group rather than stand up here and give the same presentation again. I think, you know, making our points, talking about voting, things like that, that I think are key leading up to the vote. I think last year, we did something similar. Being that these two meetings are so close together, I think that that might be a good idea. But you haven't seen this for a few weeks, and those of you who haven't, chance, this is it. So, of course, our budget is student-focused, it's fiscally responsible, and we are staying under the tax cap again, and we are presenting a balanced budget. This year, these are some of the highlights that we feel are important within the budget. And of course, living within the 2% tax cap, which we know is becoming harder and harder, especially where we see, you know, the economics of inflation increasing up to over 5% in some cases. So our health insurance premiums are going up 5%. That is a cost to our budget of about $370,000. A lot of that contributed by our post-employment benefits, where we're seeing about 33% of that from there. Our bargaining unit contracts are addressing some regional salary increases, so we're seeing increases across the board on salaries. As you know, both bargaining units settled their contracts last year. Our vendor contracts, as well as many of the costs of materials and supplies that the vendors are supplying, there are simple, you know, costs associated with that, like delivery and shipping, insurance requirements, those are all increasing. So of course, we're seeing that come through in pricing. Our property insurance premiums, they've gone up 16% in our budget, our upcoming budget, and I think about 36% over the last two years. Our special education students now, I don't know if that's still happening. And Natalie, do you know if that's still happening, where they're proposing the aging out at age 22? Or is that, it's like, they're still, they're taking it away again and going back to 21? So again, I think that'll probably be settled when the budget information comes out.
So, I think it's gonna go to court. I think that's gonna take months, maybe a year. So, but as of right now, the guidance is that we will not be sending anybody over the age of 21.
Okay, so we'll be taking this apart out of our budget presentation. It was in all along, because we hadn't heard that till recently.
It's a recent court case.
Yeah. Okay. So our transportation, as Dr. Luft mentioned, transportation home-to-school routes. Overall, we could be looking at an increase between our own expenses and the contractor's expenses up to about 40%. We're not sure where that's coming in tomorrow. Is the bid opening for that particular contract? And we're hoping to be able to establish those rates before Tuesday night. We are seeing some small changes in revenue sources, so they're helping us balance the budget. But we are going to be able to stay under the tax cap. And of course, it's gonna force us to use some of our reserves to do that. There isn't quite enough revenues coming in to cover those costs. So here, we are having to use some of the reserves. We're looking at our increased interest earnings of about $500,000 over last year. We're additional tuitioning students, we have additional tuitioning students from Garrison. This year, I think we ended up with three, and I think next year, we have six or four? Or no, 11, I'm sorry, 13? Okay, very good. So at the moment, 13, so that we're looking at additional $150,000 in revenue. We have a small increase in our foundation aid. At least, we're not having any taken away, as many districts are, but again, to be seen. Tuesday, we're hoping, I'm sorry, the budget probably won't be settled until after we adopt the budget. The state budget won't be adopted till after. We will see an increase in transportation aid, but that's only because the cost of our transportation is going up. So we should not be fooled by the fact that we are seeing an increase in transportation aid when we start looking at the breakdown of the aids in the longer budget. You may be looking at that online. So if you see an increase in transportation aid, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're getting more money because they're being nice. It means that we are getting more aid because it's costing us more money. Then we are using $399,000 of our own reserves to balance the budget. Here's a rundown on the revenues. Across the board, we see our state aid coming in at about almost 6% more, $16.5 million. Other local revenues, that includes our interest earnings that I spoke about. Now, that's going down only because we're using less of our reserves than we used in the prior year. Our transfer in from the debt service fund, that is covering our debt. So to alleviate monies to put into. monies to put into a reserve for building our, resurfacing our track and field, and our fencing out at the high school, middle school campus. School taxes, again, we're staying under our tax cap. Our tax cap came in at 2.59%. We will be seeing a tax cap in the budget of 2.56%, or $41.3 million. Again, our fund balance use will be $399,000. Total budget overall, 4.15%.
Jill, percentage-wise, of the fund balance, how much are we using, percentage-wise, would you say?
Of the fund balance?
Yeah.
Well, our fund balance is about 18% of our entire budget, which is about $14 million. I don't have that worked out, what $399,000 is, but Jeremy can do the math.
14. It's a very small percentage.
Oh, of the budget, it's 0.6, here, it's 0.66%. I do have it figured out, of the total budget, but that's not of our total reserves. You asked a different question.
The reserve, the part of the reserve. I'm always concerned about how much reserve we use.
He'll have to tell us.
2.8%.
2.8, excellent, that's very good.
And how much are we leaving on the table by not going all the way to the tax cap?
$13,000.
Okay.
There always is a calculation that's done for interest, it's an estimated interest that we have to calculate for bands that are issued, for borrowing on buses, like purchases like that, because that gets renewed every year. So we never know where that interest rate is going to come in, so I have to leave a little bit of play in there.
A wiggle room, yeah.
Because otherwise, we'll go over, and that's, we can't do that. Oops.
I'm just a...
Okay, so, oh, okay. Now, we're going to go over how the tax cap is calculated, actually, so that everyone gets a review, a lesson in that. So it's very important, though. It's, this is, I'm making light of it, because we've gone over this so many times, but it's very important to understand how the tax cap works, and we'll get into that more as we talk about, you know, approving the budget, or not approving the budget overall, and what that means. So our, to start the calculation, our prior year's tax levy is the initial start of that calculation, and the allowable tax growth gets added to that. In every town, in every school district, that allowable tax growth factor is different. Ours is 1.0052, and it's equal to $209,560. That gets added to what the prior year's tax levy was. Then we are subtracting out what we had for our debt last year, our debt payments versus what we got for building aid on those debt payments, and that is $1.1 million. Then we can add what the state allows us to add, it's capped at 2%, and that would be our CPI, which we all know, our CPI is much higher than that, but that is the capped amount that we are allowed to add, and so for us, it's $786,930. The tax cap before exclusions, then, subtotal is 40.1 million, 40.133 million. And then we have our exclusions. We add the new debt that we are liable for this year, less our building aid, which is $1.2 million. And then we are allowed to add any increase only in pension payments that exceed 2%. Our local retirement system pensions are going up 2.1%, so we're allowed to add .1, which is $5,552 to that. And that brings us to our allowable tax cap of $41.343 million, or 2.59%. That is how we calculate the tax cap. And it's a formula that every school district follows. It's not our formula, it's the same formula that everyone follows. So where does all this money go? It goes to salaries, benefits, added district tuitions, professional services, utilities, repairs and maintenance, transportation and equipment, and all of the supplies that it takes to run the school district. And here is that, those amounts broken down into different categories. We have our instruction and student services, $18.2 million, that is about 30% of our budget. Our special education services, which are about 13% of our budget, at $7.9 million. Instructional media, which is library and automated services, about 2.8% of our budget. Our pupil services and athletics, 7.26% of our budget, or $4.3 million. Transportation, again, right now is an estimate, you're seeing an increase there of 15%, and that is about 7% of our budget. Our general support, which is our district administration, legal costs, insurance costs for the buildings, again, that was an area of, that we had a big increase for our liability or insurance on our buildings. And that's 4.4% of our budget, or $2.6 million. Central services, which is our operations and maintenance, at 5% of our budget, is $3 million. And employee benefits, again, that includes the health insurance premiums, I mentioned we're going up 5%, so that's almost 23% of our budget. And at $13.8 million, our debt service is all of the principal and interest that we owe on prior capital projects, and that's $3.2 million, or 5.3% of our budget. And our inter-fund transfer is the money that we are bringing in to cover our debt. I'm sorry, that is the expense, I'm saying this wrong, I apologize. This is, that was on the revenue side, we're bringing in to cover our debt. The inter-fund transfers are, is the revenue from our funds, or for our capital and special aid, this is to cover the cost that we want to expend for our track, field, and fencing at the high school and middle school campus. And our overall budget is a 4.1% increase. So altogether, our three-part budget allocation of all of our resources, we have our program at about 75% of our budget, our capital expenditure is at 14% of our budget, and administrative costs at almost 11% of our budget.
Go with the flow, you got it.
Jill, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Could you just please reiterate about the 4.15% increase, and how much of that is actually allocated to?
That's this slide.
So that's this slide, we're doing, yep, so this, so getting back to, and I'm glad, so that was a good segue. So the budget overall is a 4.15% increase, but it is due to, these 2 main factors are our capital expenditures, and that would be in order to bring the expenditures, I mean, I'm sorry, budget for the expenditures of our track and field, replacement cost, we're bringing that money in from debt service to pay our regular debt, so that we can put that amount of money into the budget, so we can start construction in the summer of 2025. And that's, I'm sorry, that part of the budget is the 1, is the 1.3 million. The remaining amount there is 500, over a little, almost $600,000, is for our transportation anticipated expenses. So whether or not we are, you know, maintaining the contractor, or adding more transportation to our own services, but in order to do that and maintain the contractor, we anticipate that $600,000 increase in our budget-to-budget in transportation expenses. So if we didn't have the 4, if we didn't have these 2 items, our budget-to-budget increase would be like 1.2%.
But again, that doesn't impact the tax, the actual tax increase, which is coming in at about 2.56, I think you said?
Yes.
Yep. Good.
So one of the things this slide highlights is, while yes, these 2 things are, these 2 items are increasing our budget-to-budget, they also offer long-term financial savings or other advantages to the district. So the capital expenditure, by not borrowing that money, we're actually saving long-term on interest rates. We're getting stable, we know how much state aid we would get, as opposed to what it could be down the line. Escalation of construction costs only continue to go up, materials only continue to go up. So we know, by spending the money now, we're going to save money in the long run. And the same for transportation, by, we have some opportunities to find efficiencies, if they exist, within that transportation budget.
I just want to add that the capital, the capital project is really important. If anyone saw Dave Spittle's presentation about what the track condition is now, and the field condition is now, and the fencing condition is now, I think that the entire community is going to want us to do that project, and so I think by doing it now, we're being smart. The way that we're doing it, we're being smart, and again, because of that big-ticket item that is going to pay off for years, we're really saving money and being really responsible with the funding that comes into the district.
Well, for something that has a 10-year life, basically, on the field and the track itself, not necessarily the fencing.
Right.
You know, the fact that we're able to do that with cash, because that is something that you could pay off over a much longer period of time, and would end up costing you a lot more than what you actually paid for it. So if we can do that with cash, and we can save for that periodically, knowing that that's a 10- or 11-year life on something like that, that's the best way to go, so.
The fencing itself has been here since the high school opened. I mean, the fencing is really falling apart.
Yeah, the fencing is still the original, but the field itself, you know, at 1, 10 years ago, I guess, by the time we replace it, will, you know, it will have about, you know, we've definitely gotten our use out of it, but the fact that it is not a 15- or 30-year, you know, payback is, you know, will be, otherwise, we'd be paying it back after the life of it, it's over. So it makes a lot of sense to do it this way, and I hope people see it that way. So anyway, the one, the budget itself, without these 2 items, we would be looking at a 1% increase overall from year to year.
All right. Good.
So again, we are always trying to maintain our facilities, our infrastructure, and keep our property values, so we continue to reevaluate our facilities' needs and planning for the future. We update our 5-year plan, periodic, well, actually, every 5 years, but we are always doing it. We do it every single year, we look at our projects and what, you know, what needs to be addressed, and if we have to reprioritize, we do that. So maintaining the turf and field track, and the replacement plan for the summer of 2025. So part of the money will be brought in from the budget this year, and plan to bring part in next year, so that when we do start the construction in the summer of 2025, the money will be there to pay for the entire project. So we always want to sustain and be able to predict our tax levy, right? We don't want that to be something that fluctuates up and down for our taxpayers, we want to keep that at an even, even amount. People want to know what they're going to be paying from year to year, they don't want to know, be guessing, you know, every year, what is it going to be, because we have to do this project or that project. So I think what I really want to talk about tonight, again, and stress is, you know, how do we keep those debt expenses flat, when we know we're going to have large capital costs coming, whether it's next year, the year after, or, you know, years to follow? So we do know that at a certain period in time, we do have debt coming off of our payback schedules, and, you know, those are the ideal times for us to do a capital project. So how do we do that in the most economical way? And of course, we will have to borrow some of that money, but in order to keep the cost of that down, or keep it flat, and keep the taxes where they are, we need to establish, well, the state allows us to establish what is called a capital reserve account. Now currently, we have a capital reserve account. It is expiring. In other words, the state only allows you to maintain it for 10 years. So if we want to keep this going, and we want to be able to reduce our costs associated with capital projects, we should continue to use it, and, you know, we should continue to maintain a capital reserve. So right now, like I said, ours is expiring. We have the opportunity right now to put a proposition on the ballot, to create a second one. We know that in '27, '28, we're going to be thinking about, well, we're planning it now, a capital project, to upgrade and keep up our facilities, and it's going to cost money. So we need to have a way to save as much as possible from the cost to finance those things. So how we can do that is at the end of every fiscal year, we can take any leftover, remaining funds that are in our budget, or should happen to be left over, and put them into our capital reserve, because that's how we can keep the cost of our capital projects down. And in order to do that, we have to have a proposition on the ballot that allows the school district to do that, and the community would have to vote on that proposition. Right now, we're proposing that that reserve be capped at $10 million over 10 years. Now, the one we have currently is up to $10 million over 10 years, but we haven't even accumulated that much, we haven't been able to. It's not guaranteed that we'd ever be able to save that much over 10 years, but we want to give ourselves that ability to, if that, those occasions should arise. It's doubtful that it would ever get that high. Right now, we have $3.7 million in our capital reserve. We're calling this the Capital Reserve 2, because we have to establish a new one. The law requires us to have a new one, we cannot add to the old one. So I don't know if everyone is understanding that, but I want to try to stress the importance of having it, and how it helps reduce the cost of financing a project over time. So this is strictly asking for permission to establish the reserve, we're not putting any money into that reserve.
Right.
From the budget. There is no money budgeted in our current year's 2024-25 budget to fund it, it's only to establish a placeholder for it.
So currently, in layman's terms, we have a savings account that we will no longer be able to put money into, and in order to continue to save in this particular way, we will have to open a new savings account. This year, we will not be putting any money into that savings account. In order for the money to be taken out of any savings account that has money, the public has to approve, correct?
Correct. So yes, to access.
That was very well done.
I just, I'm trying to make it simple, because the terminology can get people stuck.
I have to say it, maybe the legal way, but that simplifies it, and is a very, so I'm glad I'm explaining it, so that you understand it.
Yeah.
But what I want to say is that, what I failed to mention, and what you just mentioned, was that the money cannot be taken out of that reserve by the board, by the school district, without voter approval. So if we are to establish a capital project, and we need, we want to use some of those monies to help reduce the financing of it, we have to, again, go back to the public, ask their permission, we want to use X number of dollars to help finance this project, do we have your permission, before we can actually access it?
Right.
And the other important talking point is, while the capital reserve, 1, can no longer accept new funds, the current funds that are in there do not go anywhere. We still have access to those funds, we could just no longer deposit money into that account.
Right. And I mean, if, we've all been a part of some sort of renovation project, and at some point in our lives, right? And so I think comparing it to that, right, when you know that you're going to have a big-ticket item eventually, that you're going to have to deal with in your house, replacing the roof, it's better to have that money saved somewhere than to have to take it out on loan and then pay interest. And in establishing this account, which is all we are needing to ask approval for, it allows us to be able to put funds away, so that when that rainy day happens, we're able to do something, whether it's for something that needs to be done, or something that's going to upgrade our facilities, you know, whatever the capital project is, voters would have to say yes, to be able to take it out of, to take the funding out of the account, so that we could then do that. And I think that piece is really important. It's very similar process to what we always do, and it's always better to use the money that you have, as opposed to borrowing it and paying interest.
Well, that helps us keep our tax levy and our tax rate flat, and people can, you know, plan for their budgets as well at home. So again, these are just the points we just went over, and I, and again, a lot of this has a lot of language to it. I like to have this posted on our website, so that people who aren't listening will certainly be able to have a resource to go to, to try to help them understand what it's all about, and if I don't keep this in there, you know, they won't be able to see that, and they'll have further questions. But I would recommend anybody that, you know, you're speaking to, is that you recommend they go there, they read this, and if not, and if there's, if they don't understand, is to call the people that can explain it to them the best, which is myself. The district office is available, we're available for questions every day. So there must be voter approval, the voters must approve the proposition establishing the reserve for a specific purpose or multiple purposes, the money cannot be added, money cannot be added to the reserve without board approval. So at year-end, if there are any funds left over in the budget, I have to come out and ask for approval, can we add this to the reserve? So again, asking permission. No money is added to the reserve unless there are remaining funds at the end of the school year, and there's a maximum. there's a maximum amount and timeframe established at the time the proposition is presented. The second proposition that we're going to see on the ballot is for a bus proposition. Again, this goes back to, um, having to go out for a trin, new transportation contract, um, whether or not we're going to have to replace buses, buy buses, um, hire more employees. We're really not sure how that's going to, uh, turn out yet. Um, we're current, but we're not, again, we're not asking for money in the budget, um, to put into this, um, to put into this. All we're asking is that we have, um, a, a resource to, um, borrow money if we have to buy, um, buses, if we need to replace any vehicles that are exist in the district. Um, this gives us a way to finance them over five years, um, instead of having to pay for them outright. Um, so, uh, we're currently, we currently have a bus proposition, um, right now, uh, reserved or a, a placeholder, but it's, it's only, right now, we've already used some of it. It's about $400,000. Um, buses are expensive. Um, if we have to buy multiple buses for any reason, um, it certainly isn't enough to, to have on the side to do that. We, again, we don't have the money. We're not borrowing the money. We're just asking for permission should we need to borrow the money.
And this one's very much an insurance policy for the district. If the bus bids come back high and it becomes less expensive for us to use our own drivers, we would need vehicles for those drivers to drive. And without this money, we would be unable to purchase those vehicles and be stuck paying a contractor or premium, uh, when we could otherwise be saving money for the district.
So, in the 24-25 school budget vote, on May 21st, we are, we have the following propositions. We have our budget proposition, um, 60 million point five, 60 million five fifty-seven, six fifty-three. We have the proposition to establish the second capital reserve and a proposition to allow for financing of district buses should we need to borrow money. Um, we are als, we will also be electing two board trustees. And we kind of went through a lot of the questions as we were talking, so I don't suppose anyone has any in our large audience. Um, can, budget contingency, right? So, um, okay. So, again, all of the things we just talked about, the tax cap, um, you know, and what happens if we, if a budget should fail? So, these, this is a, is the highlight of, of budget season, because any budget that fails, um, the board has a right to, to put the budget back up for a second vote. But they also have, um, the possibility of that, of that not passing a second time. And if it shouldn't pass a second time, it would be devastating to a school district. And I want, I can't stress that enough. Um, what it means for us first and foremost is that we have to revert our revenues by using, back to the prior year's tax levy. So, I would not be able to incorporate a new tax levy in this year's budget. I would have to go back to the prior year's tax levy, which would mean that I would have to cut one, over a million dollars from the budget. Cutting over a million dollars from the budget, although we haven't, we don't have a particular plan to do that, because we hope that that won't happen, um, but you have to think about what the devastating impact would be. It's obviously not just going to be staff. It's going to be program. It's going to be possibly athletics, possibly, you know, uh, just number of people and, 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 and program. I mean, and, and that will take away from students ultimately. Um, so reducing the proposed budget by over a million dollars, uh, would do all of those things. And that's where we start. Um, and then where do we go from there? So, next year, when we, um, try to develop a budget again, we're already starting.
Lower.
A million dollars less than we were the prior year, which means the bottom line is $2 million less. And the following year is $4 million less. And it continues to compound year after year, not because it may fail next year, but we're always going to be behind that money that we didn't, that we weren't able to capture in the, in the current year. And a lot of this, um, you have to, you have to look at the budget overall and say, you know, what is the, what is the increase? The increases, without those two items we talked about, is a 1% increase. We, I don't know how to establish a bug, a budget that's less than that, um, without, without reducing what we have as per programs and staff. And, um, if that starts to happen, again, we devastate things in the district for students and for the community and for, for home values. And, um, that's not something we need, we want to happen. Um, so the reason this is happening, um, we feel, um, a lot of times, people are not paying attention, not coming out to vote. Um, you know, it's not necessarily that they don't support education, but rather that they're complacent about the fact that they need to. Uh, so, I'm going to let you talk a little bit about voter approval rate, because it's very important.
So, focus area of ours for the past couple of years has been trying to improve our voter turnout. Um, this slide represents the percent passing vote, uh, for Putnam Valley. Uh, it's all schools in New York State, Mid-Hudson region, and small down, downstate schools. And what you notice is 54.4% of those who voted, voted in a positive or approval of the budget, which means slightly under 46% of our voters voted against our school budget, which puts Putnam Valley very much on a razor's edge compared to really all schools across New York State and certainly schools across our region, where many of them, uh, pass with 80% majority. Now, this breakdown shows maybe some of, uh, well, it shows some of the demographic information. I think first and foremost, the school district owes, uh, those individuals aged 55 and older a great, uh, deal of gratitude, because the reality is, is that group represents well over 50% of the votes cast, which therefore means many of those individuals are coming out and voting to approve our school budget. Um, sometimes we stereotype of senior citizens or those voting against the school budget, but I think this slide demonstrates the fact in Putnam Valley that is not in fact true. Maybe the most concerning piece of this slide is those aged 30 to 54, which we would typically consider, um, the ages of individuals who may have students in our buildings, represent 37% of the entire vote, when, in, where individuals 18 to 29 represent 6%. As we break down that information a little bit further and we compare parents who voted versus parents who did not, we see here nearly 75% of parents of our students did not cast a vote last board, last time around. So, that 54% in the affirmative, uh, represents only 25% of our parents who came out and cast a vote. So, we're extremely close to having a defeated budget. One, not need look far to, to see what the ramifications of a defeated budget are for not only the instructional program, but home values in a community. And the long-term implications as that money compounds itself year after year. If we look a little bit further, uh, voters, so we look at all registered voters, uh, only 18.9% of registered voters come out and cast a vote, which means well over 80% of voters, of registered voters do not vote at all on our school budget. And another way, looking at parents, parents who voted versus other voters in our last vote, 70% of all votes cast last time were of non-parents, where 30% of votes cast represent votes cast by our parents. So, obviously, we want all community members to come out and vote. We want a much higher turnout than 18.9%. Um, the sad reality is, is our voter numbers are actually higher than some of our neighbors. We had four more voters than Yorktown and over 200 more voters than Lakeland. And both of those districts are significantly higher, but both of those districts also passed their budgets with nearly an 80% majority. Uh, Putnam Valley is not there. We're within 4% of a defeated budget, which makes it even more essential that we get greater voter turnout. The last thing that anybody wants in this community is for the school system, our instructional program, the future of our students, and our home values to be decided by less than 20% of registered voters. Um, I think we've held all of our budget Q and A sessions. The last one was the PTA one we held the other evening. But as Jill had mentioned earlier, if anybody viewing this or seeing it online ever has any, any questions, do not hesitate to reach out. Our main goal is to make sure that the accurate information is in the hands of the community. We are willing to do that via email, over the phone, in-person meetings, any way that we can make sure accurate information is out there. We are willing to do so, so individuals can make an informed decision when it comes time to take, to cast their ballot. So, not only we want people to come out, but we want people to come out and have accurate information as to what exactly they are voting on. My greatest fear are the two propositions. Uh, they look like big numbers, but the reality is, by approving those, we are simply granting the district permission to save money and permission to buy buses if they are cost-effective. There is zero dollars associated with those two budget items at their inception. By approving them, our budget does not go up $1, uh, but it could have long-term implications on the district if those two propositions are not. So, I'm going to continue to repeat that. By approving those two propositions, we are not increasing our budget a single dollar. They are simply propositions that grant the district permission to, one, save money for future projects, and, two, give us the flexibility to purchase vehicles if that becomes the most cost-effective way to provide transportation for our students. I won't do it a third time. So, just a reminder, our vote is scheduled for May 21st. Our polling stations are open from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. That's the longest window around. We want to give everyone an opportunity to come cast a ballot, whether it be before they go to work or after they get home. I know people are very busy. Everybody's running around. Um, but this is something that's really important to our community. Absentee ballots will become available later in April, and more information will be shared, uh, as to when and where and how those could be. Picked up? And again, any additional budget questions, please reach out to Jill or myself. The information is here. Questions? I think we already answered all the questions?
I hope so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, let's move on to new business. Item number one.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Ashley Asam Sager, uh, to a four-year probationary term as a physics teacher commencing on September 1st, 2024, and terminating on August 31st, 2028, in the 10-year area of science at the high school in Step One, Masters of the PVFT Salary Schedule. Ms. Asam Sager, uh, New York State Physics 712 Certification is pending. In order to be eligible for appointment to 10 years, an employee must receive at least three, uh, APPR ratings of effective or highly effective during the four-year probationary term, and may not receive an ineffective rating in the final year of probation.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of cleaner Gregory Yovan from the district, effective April 5th, 2024, as per document number 152-24, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody. Uh, number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a request for a leave of absence for Ramona Portalecki in her position as a lunch monitor at the middle school from April 8th, 2024 through June 30th, 2024, and appoint Ms. Portalecki as a leave replacement teaching assistant, effective April 8th, 2024 through June 26th, 2024, at $120 per day, increasing to $130 per day when Ms. Portalecki's teaching assistant certification is issued.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Okay, public comment on any topic?
I know. Wow. This is great. It's an exciting night.
Um, my name is Liz Bros. I were, I'm here saying something, um, in my role as lab person in the elementary school. Um, I just wanted to first say thank you, um, for supporting our young people. I neglected to say that earlier. It means a great deal to both Jen Bruno and I. We love what we do, and we love working with these students. And when they know you're coming to see their projects, they're thrilled. It really thrills them. It's a huge pleasure to see them grow and to have them here tonight. So, thank you for indulging us and supporting them. It means a great deal. Um, I also just wanted to say thank you for providing the, uh, solar eclipse classes. That too was a thrill, a thrill for me. Um, I think for many of the elementary school, uh, teachers, a surprising thrill. Um, and for so many of our students there, who might not otherwise have had that opportunity. Um, I, I think it was a wonderful experience for those that participated in it. So, thank you for making that happen, by providing the glasses.
Thank you for all you do, for our kids.
Absolutely.
Much appreciated.
Still Joe Ferraro. Um, I have a little quick laundry list, but I wanted to head on to, to Liz Bros's, uh, comments about the science research for the elementary school as well as the high school, of course. Um, it's really important that the community is aware that stuff like that doesn't happen by accident. It's by design. It's with care and with, and with eye to the future. It continues our progressive educational experience here at Putnam Valley and is only possible because the community votes for a budget that makes that possible. We, we cannot divorce the, the effect of the vote on what actually we can produce for our students, that they can then give back to us in, uh, learning and their experience. It's not, that can't be matched in any other way, other than connecting the actual, there is, there is a checkbox. I am allowed to say this, because I'm not on the board. There's a checkbox on the ballot that makes stuff like that possible. And that's just a tiny, tiny sliver of all the amazing things that happen in our builds in our district. So, just want to tie that on to that. I had a question about the garrison. It's fantastic. We're moving up to 13 students. Um, beyond helping with the budget, which is just a joke, as far as, uh, it really making a difference in the budget, but not really. Um, I, I'm really be interested in, is there an analysis of why, do we have a survey as to why the additional students from Garrison want to come to Putnam Valley? I'm hoping it's not simply they're the closest ones on the fringe of the community, but there's something that attracted them, like either science research or whatever else it is. And if you haven't done that analysis, I'd love for that analysis to, to be looked at. Again, Dr. Luft, I need to remind you, part of all Generation X, 55-year-olds are not senior citizens.
So, I was very careful this time. I said sometimes we stereotype senior citizens. I didn't say that everyone 55 and older was a senior citizen, but noted. And to answer your garrison question, although it's anecdotal, we do not have, um, sort of survey data, the parent feedback and conversations we've had are, one, Putnam Valley does a really good job of hosting the students, uh, giving them a sense of what a day in the life of a Putnam Valley student is. Having our students, I shouldn't give away all our secrets to other schools, having our students lead the parent tours when they come for the evening. Um, but I could say there was more garrison parents at our IB night, which they were simply invited to. It wasn't a garrison student IB night. It was an IB night for any parent. There were more garrison parents in attendance than there were Putnam Valley parents. So, science research, IB in our instructional program, as well as all we have to offer in terms of extracurriculars and everything else, is certainly a driving factor in what, uh, is helping entice garrison students here at Putnam Valley.
That, that attendance is kind of scary to me, because that ties in.
And again, anecdotally, you could just hear the excitement and the energy, and some of them even shared with me how much they were enjoying their day and how amazed they were by the school. So the students themselves were so excited about being here and probably were the ones really driving the choice to come here.
I have one last thing. Sorry.
If I, if I can, Dr. Luft, the graduating class out of garrison is what, 27, I think?
I don't know if it's even that high. I think they're just over 20.
So we have more, more than half?
Well, over 50%. Yeah, well over 50%, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm sure, Jill, that's spread out. That, that's not just one little area, yeah.
And lastly, I can't, I broke my glasses, so this is tough. Oh, the contingency budget. You know, the even more damaging than the million dollars that have to be cut is, in addition to that million dollars, is the limits that are put on what can be spent based on whatever else is left over. So that would not only just cut the million dollars out of the budget entirely, it would shrink the things that we could spend the remaining dollars on, which then shrinks what we can actually deliver. So that it's, it's compounded by those regulations. So contingency, you know, we've already seen what contingency did to Carmel, and it's really, I don't know, that's not the only thing that, that hurt Carmel, but the, it's really important that the budget gets the biggest vote it can, that way it can get passed in that way to worry about contingency, but it, because it's draconian, what happens. So that, that seems to be a big emphasis. Without, you know, some people will say that we're constantly sounding the alarm, sounding the alarm as a district that we're threatening to take programs away. It's like, it's just the reality. So it's, it's a harsh reality, and I just want the community to know that that's really important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Okay, upcoming meetings?
We're going to try something new on Tuesday. We're going to talk about budget. Tuesday's also the Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs or statewide BOCs vote, which is why we are coming right back here on Tuesday. I promise my update will be non-existent unless something really exciting happens between now and Tuesday.
Another eclipse.
Will a rep from Tech Center or BOCs be here at that meeting?
Not at that meeting. They're scheduled to come on March 7th. We're going to, actually, right?
May 7th.
May 7th, sorry.
May 23rd.
May 23rd, just kidding. So, May 23rd is when someone from PNW BOCs is coming.
Excellent, good.
Definitely not March, that would be back in time.
Yeah, that, that would be. That'd be fancy.
I blame the eclipse.
Board member comment. Sam, you were at the CTC meeting today?
Yes.
Do you have any thing, any insights from that meeting? It's Communities That Care Coalition.
I know you were, you were also in attendance. The, the outreach from the county for our kids is, is pretty phenomenal. They, you know, substance abuse and any of those critical issues that our young people are faced with, they're on top of. And they also discussed a scholarship that's currently available, but it's, it, it's a scholarship that's kind of poignant because it concerns those children that may have survived or dealt with serious addiction problems within family. So, you know, those scholarships are sometimes tough to put out there because a lot of kids don't want to talk about that. But it is available and we'll be getting more information sent to the district tomorrow.
Yeah, it's good. And I, and I think it's always good when we connect with other districts and other people in our county or in Westchester Putnam, because it gives us a wider base of support. It's not just us alone. To that point, we've talked a lot about civics and civic engagement. I know that we just got a thing from Westchester Putnam about show and tells, so there's, there's articles to read and a podcast to listen to.
Yes.
And then on the 15th is the community conversation that evening from 7:00 to 8:30. You can just sign up and get the link and listen if you can. It's, it's good to hear what other districts are doing civically. So that's, that's, that's it.
I'll be attending the PVMS steering committee on April 17th.
Good.
That is the second to last meeting that we will have. I'm not sure yet what the agenda is for that meeting, but I'm sure it will be good. It always is. We get a lot of work done.
Yeah.
And the steering committee has been really, well, in my opinion, I'm on two out of three of them, and, and they've been very successful this year, in my opinion. I think it's important to have a forum where parents can participate and share their voice. I would urge more parents to join and to sign up if you can, if you're able. If you're not able because of the timeframe, you know, please let us know what time works for you because your voice is important. And it's really been a joy to be on both of those steering committees to just know what's going on and, and help to, you know, formulate whatever it is that we, we need to do as a partnership from parents to school.
And we certainly appreciate your reporting to us because we're not parents and don't take that spot, so it works out perfectly for you.
And also, Barbara, I know that you and Jeanette were at the PTA meeting, which is a phenomenal organization. The things that they provide our kids is just amazing through their fundraisers and various activities. And I know that they're, they're doing an outreach right now to try to get more people involved, but also hold positions within the organization. They're trying to fill those at this point in time. So if you're interested, please contact our PTA. You can do it on the website.
Yes.
It's a great organization.
That's a good plug because, you know, the PTA has rules, so certain people can only be in certain positions for a certain amount of time, which hurts the organization sometimes because there are just not that many people who are able or willing to give of their time in that way. And they do a lot for our kids. They do awesome events, grade level events, class parent events, lots of things here at the middle school, student of the month breakfast. They really do a lot. So if you, if you can give even an hour a week, please join, sign up.
Okay, anything else? I'd like a motion to convene an elective, an executive session for four matters of the employment history of one particular, four particular persons.
So moved.
Wait, and one matter of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the civil service law.
So moved.
Second.
There will be no business conducted afterward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gracias.